This meeting is called. Roll call, trustee Robinson will not be here today. Our treasurer will be late. So our trustees are here and our new trustee will be sworn in today. Our director, assistant director, and our business manager. So next we will have the pledge of allegiance and flags of the board. You ready? I pledge allegiance to the body. All right, so our next item is recognition of trustees. And so they both serve for a short period of time. And we'd like to thank Karen Campbell and Tony Ambrosetti for standing in the gap for children and our community and for library board. Director Tony, you want to pass that down?
Thank you very much.
And next we have swearing in of the elected trustee Idaho Code 332719. Raise your hand. So I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of library district trustee.
Of library district trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay. And then we have public comment. Speakers, state your name and community and speak for no more than three minutes. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe a level of civility and decorum appropriate for a public meeting. No personal attacks, no disruptions from audience members will be tolerated or may be trespassed. So our first speaker is Mariana Cochran.
Sorry. Good afternoon. We each have various ways we de-stress. One of my favorites is just taking a few minutes a day to watch cute baby videos on YouTube. Children's innocence and silliness, sometimes their naughtiness are distracting, joyful, and restorative for me. Recently, during these brief escapes, I discovered the new social media trend of AI-generated baby videos of celebrities and politicians. Since I assume this board doesn't while away your spare time online, I'll fill you in. The baby AI meme is a social media trend wherein AI-generated videos feature babies with the faces of celebrities and politicians speaking or acting as that celebrity or politician. So the irony and silliness are a captivating momentary escape. I'm unsure what brought on this new trend, but it's likely the latest iteration of bread and circuses. Harmless fun nevertheless. Here are several examples. Baby Trump. Here's baby Trump and baby Zelensky. Or excuse me, baby Elon. Here's baby Trump and baby Zelensky. Oh, baby William Wallace, Braveheart. And we have baby Tina Turner. The videos are much more chatty than photos, but you get the idea. So before this trend fizzles so that and so that you can forever be a part of it, we created your own baby AI memes. And I must say that each of you are adorable. So this is baby trustee Audison. Baby trustee Plasse. Baby trustee Robinson. Baby trustee Hanley. And baby trustee Baumann. And of course, last but not least, baby director Walters. There is a point to my bringing up this goofiness. It's about the babies and your impact on them. What this board and director Walters have accomplished in the last two years will have ripple effects for many years on this community's children who are our community's future adults. And welcome to trustee Baumann, who I have no doubt will make her own indelibly positive marks on this board, our cherished libraries, and our beloved children. So on behalf of the babies, who let's remember will be the future's caretakers, thank you for all that you've endured to get here, to stay here, and to keep on keeping on to protect and enrich the lives of babies and children to make our world better.
I thought you'd want your souvenir. I want directors' best.
You can frame it.
Next we have Jeff Lewis.
Thank you, Jeff Lewis Postfalls. A few months before the May 2023 election for two trustee seats, concerned parent gave public comment at one of the contentions CLN board meetings. He told the board, quote, "That they had awakened a sleeping giant," unquote. Three years later, we see the results of the silent army. Home school parents, churches, legislators, and other community members voted to protect their children with common sense guardrails and laws aligning themselves with 70% of Idahoans. Our Cooney County legislators, who passed the Children's School and Library Protection Act in 2024, were all reelected last November with overwhelming support. Our newest trustee was elected by a 2,500-vote margin, a clear mandate from the voters. Since May of 2023, three new board members have been elected to support House Bill 710. We have a new director who, unlike previous directors that refused to acknowledge the issue of sexual content in children's books, embraced the new law and is working with the current board to implement it. Others around the country are also awake and fighting back. At the April Quarterly and School Board Meeting, Superintendent Sean Hocker made the following comments regarding challenging challenged books. 210 were presented to the board for review. 52 have been reclassified to parent consent required versus to check the book out. Two books have been removed from circulation. These books are being reviewed by a committee of 16 to 20 parents using the website commonsensemedia.org. And finally, in Texas this week, Texas Library Law signed in June 16, 2025, prohibition on sexual content in school libraries became law Monday as Governor Greg Abbott signed a bill banning explicit books along with additional measures to increase parents' input in Texas classrooms. House Bill 900 will prohibit schools from purchasing books that are sexually explicit, pervasively vulgar, or educationally unsuitable. Title the Restricting Explicit and Adult Design Educational Resources Act, the legislation will set new standards for school libraries to follow when adding books to their collections. So finally, yes, three years later, the sleeping giant is awake in Cooney County and also across the nation. I welcome our new trustee Victoria and encourage the board as it continues to bring common sense back into our libraries.
Next, we have Tony Ambrosetti.
First, I'd like to congratulate trustee Baumann. Very, very well done. A great campaign that you ran. Really glad to see you up there. It was a great privilege and honor for me to serve. Thank you all for giving me that opportunity. I wanted to leave you with a few words of encouragement. We're not fighting something new. This has been around for a long, long time. People want to corrupt our children. Why? Diabolical perhaps? What I would think, but there may be many reasons. As long as there's big print and printed material, we've had to deal with this. In the 18th century, there was a great moral theologian named Saint Alphonsus de Goury who likened books to food. Do you remember when you all allowed me to join you last November? I said that a book, a good book, was the best teacher or the operative word is. Because, well, Saint Alphonsus de Goury said likening again, making the analogy of food. Did you ever feed your children anything that didn't nurture them, but in fact went towards poisoning them? Something that's toxic? And that's what we're fighting with. We really are. We're fighting against it. And I wanted to leave you with those words of encouragement that what you're doing, what we've done the last several months together, and what you all will be doing and continuing to do is what needs to be done, but it's probably never going to end. There will always be the assault. So courage, stay in the fight. And again, thank you for helping me, letting me help you make our libraries great again and making them safe again for our children and grandchildren. So God bless you. Thank you.
That's the head of Anita Dusek.
Anita Dusek, restroom. I'm happy to see that the actions, policies, and procedures put in place over the past two years and so have not caused any books to be banned from libraries, have not closed the doors of libraries, and haven't caused it up for in the community that we serve and have supported parental rights. This tells me that a conservative board has benefited this community, and I'm happy to welcome Victoria into the fight that she's going to have. And I look forward to you guys continuing your positive movement with financial, with finances, affiliation, collection, staffing, and mostly mindfulness of this community's tax dollars. Thank you very much.
All right. This concludes the only portion of our meeting for taking public comments. If you have something to say outside of the now expired public comment time, do not disrupt our work. You are invited to send us a website email or sign up to speak at a future CLN meeting. Should you choose to disrupt our official government proceedings, you are hereby warned to ask for Idaho Code 187008. You may be trespassed for up to a year. So next we have elections of officers, and I nominate Tom Hanley for chair. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, I guess we will now vote Tom. Tom Hanley for chair. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye ish. All right, ayes have it, and Tom Hanley is our chair.
I want to go.
There you go.
Here's just the part where I solicit motion to adjourn. Next item on the agenda is election of officers in accordance with Idaho Code 33-2719. And I'd like to nominate Michelle Addison as vice chair. Do we have any other nomination? Hearing that, we can vote on it. All those in favor of Michelle Addison as vice chair, say aye. Congratulations. Moving on to item number eight on the agenda, appointment of treasurer and clerk. I'd like to entertain nominations for those two positions at this time. Please raise your hand. Sit motion, trustee Addison.
All right, I move to appoint Victoria Baumann for clerk and Yasmin Harris for treasurer.
Yeah, any other nominations for treasurer or clerk? Seeing none, I'll vote for Michelle. I'm sorry. We had Victoria for clerk, Victoria. Victoria and for Jasmine, Jasmine as the treasurer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have it. Congratulations to everyone. Except me. Okay. We have, okay, I guess this is where we sign. We have a signature thing here. Item number nine, resolution CLN, I guess, to 192025, change of bank signature cards. We do a signature on that right now, if that's funny to go. And I don't know who's on that. Is that just her?
It just says that, I'm sure.
Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's for the CIN. So we should have our board packets submitted for their regular meeting of May 15. And also the CIN's financial statements for paper. Let's see, I was.
I don't have any impressions. Find me.
Okay, I have one question. On page, since page one of ones, after the valid date on the income statement, it's toward the bottom of the revenues. There's ebook membership, ebook contributions, and ebook donations. Let me see if I have here. Membership, okay. I'm not sure I understand if membership contributions versus donations. I'm just confused on the sources of these funds. Especially, I mean, we have budgeted in there for ebook donations. Is that just based on historical donations to ebooks? And the same thing with ebook membership? I'm not sure I understand how. Ebook membership, or is this the budgeted amount we're expecting to spend? Is that what that is? Versus what's coming in?
The budgeted amount is based on the calculations we have for all the CIN libraries. And so the $3,000 is a specific donation that one of the libraries in CIN typically does each year. And then the contributions, you can see normally we budget 10,000, but CLN has been donating more. They're only, in the budget, it only shows 5,000 from CLN and 5,000 from Quarterly. But typically, CLN has donated a lot more in the contributions. And then the e-membership has not been as bad yet.
You plus? Follow up, the ebook contributions, that's mainly CLN buying individual books. But CIN basically has control of that, whatever. And it sounds like nothing was done this last month.
Yeah, yeah. So the, well, the 3,000, there's one member that puts in 3,000. And then there's two members that put in the number as well, CDA and CLN, and it's 5,000. But then, so that's just a separate, above that, we can contribute whatever we want. So historically, CLN, last 11 years, has done about 80,000 average a year that we contribute. I think that exposes Quarterly, but I think it's down around 20,000, 25,000. But so that's not in any of the documents. That's the decision of that member to contribute what they would like.
Does he have a question? But the money that CLN contributed came out of our.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we had planned to do that already. Just thought with all the hubbub going on, maybe we wouldn't have spent that much money, but maybe it was earlier there. The CIN.
The 83.
Well, we're part of that 83,000.
I think we, there was a 15,000 of the last installment.
Oh, so we weren't the big part of that 83. I mean, we.
Well, we are, yeah. Yeah, I'm just saying. The 50 was before my time. Since '17, 15 was the latest installment, which happened previous to any of the recent developments.
Yeah, I don't think I got any. Part of that agenda item, A, diminish from the regular meeting from, hey, is that part of our package?
This, CIN.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got that. Okay, good, okay.
I only had two, it felt too small. My articles on there. It was on page two. The end of paragraph eight, just before the end, it says, "We do, we do want the non-user feedback relying," I assume it means upon or on the communications department. I think there's no word there.
Yes, one.
Yeah, so, okay, okay. We can, is that set in? And. And then one other small finding was paragraph nine. In the second part of that paragraph, the first sentence, second sentence, is the sentence included in lines nine through 10, it too long. I think it's maybe the word, it doesn't belong in there. That's all. Is that? I don't know, maybe substantial changes here. Anybody else have any issues regarding the consent agenda?
So is the, this unique recovery, the just take that part of this?
For the financials.
It could be part of it. I never talked about it.
No, we don't. It's the back of the.
CLN.
Yeah, it's not, it's not consented.
Okay.
Well, there's no further, you go. If there's no further discussion on this, objection? Anybody have any objections? Without objections, I recommend that we accept the. Let me see here, the CIN's consent agenda, sorry, the consent agenda. As amended. So I'll say it when we're turning up. So without further discussion, if there's no objection, any objections on it, then the consent agenda is approved. And keep my consent. And then we move on to the CLN's financial statement, agenda number 11. You want to comment on it? That he plus?
I guess a couple of small comments. Expenditure 610, account 610, 630 and 635. Collections, internet access, telecom. I guess the internet access to telecom first. My, my question is, I look at the donation for 635. Not, I thought telecom was the telephone that we had. And then we have internet access, but why is there a 5G fiber optic internet and 630 and 1G? LIT fiber service? Telecom router, where? Seems like these would all be under internet. There is a telephone one for down, but where are we paying for two fiber optic services? I guess I'd kind of like to see the difference from 630, 635. And then the other question on 610 was, I was kind of surprised to read that collections that were subscribing to Netflix and Hulu. And, but that's kind of something new to me. I didn't notice, but how much are we spending for that? And how is that huge?
Yes, we have some laptops with a device that allows patrons to check it out and borrow the Netflix. We just have one or two Netflix subscriptions and Hulu for patrons to be able to borrow and use for a couple of weeks and then bring it back. And so it's only.
So this is for patrons to take home and watch their own videos.
Correct.
Or.
Right.
A week, two at a time.
Right, so if they would borrow a DVD from the library, it's a similar idea, but we're paying for subscriptions so they can watch multiple videos over a couple of weeks.
It's only $20 a year, what you're saying?
Oh, no, monthly.
And then the other question on the difference on the internet and telecom, one of the both fibers.
So we have two different vendors. And historically, we have put the internet access on for the 5G and then the telecom is because we use a vendor that does the telephone service. So it's not that we're paying double for internet access. It's historically how we coded it. But if you would like me to give further a description of why that way, I can certainly do that.
So I guess the one that I'm looking at is account 760, telephone. That's IP, voice fax, administrative fees, and so forth. So if you look at. 760. This month, we spent $2,200, $2,200 on the telephone. Telecom that shows credit of 29,000. I'm just, I find it really confusing.
Oh.
What's going on between telephone and internet?
So the reason we have a credit this month, if you read the description in 635 telecom, we received a check from Idaho Commission for Libraries for $33,755.06 to supplement the 30% the E-rate does not cover. So that's why it had credit, because. Right, it's ICFL supplement to E-rate. So in essence, between E-rate, which pays 70% for our internet access and telecom, and the 30% for ICFL, the library pays zero for that internet access.
There's a session. I think trustee Plasse indicated you had this out. She just called unique. I mean, that's part of the financial.
Yeah, before I had another question on this, I was letting somebody up.
No, yeah.
On 455 and 460 revenues for grants, CLN brands, and then there's Postfalls brands. So we have lots of friends. I noticed the description, 460 CLN brand grants, 700 for summer funds, income grants for 55 is IO Commission for Libraries. I don't know why they're giving us more than, you got 4,000 for summer STEM programs. Four thousand for summer STEM programs. Do we normally designated. Uses for the grants that we give, and if so, I. I'd like to get it coded somehow so that we. Know when I see there's four thousand for grants. That it's really going down to programs. Cause I, in the past, I've just kind of thought any of these grants are just for the library to use, but if it's for a specific use. And we've got C L N friends that so far have given almost, you know, thirteen thousand, hundred, is that all for programs? Right, so. I don't know how you do it, but I'd like to. See the total or where it's all going because maybe the. Board and our budget doesn't need to give twenty thousand to programs if these other programs are given. Fourteen or twenty thousand, so. Anyway.
Yeah, so. You know. You'll notice in this particular. Monthly that you're getting here, that, um. Uh, youth programs is hundred and eight percent expended. And this is part of this cleanup for. Process or transparency process speaks right to this question, so typically what happened on previous budgets is that you would see the grants coming in as revenue. And then in the expense line, we had a G L code for the same grant terminology and it, it was just going out. But I'm moving towards doing what you're asking for, which is to have that revenue coming at the top, then to apply it to the, to the department that's getting those funds. So, so we've actually recoded from the beginning of this year, which, so normally you wouldn't see the youth program budget hit this percentage of this time of year. But because we went back. Future twenty-six, twenty-six, we wouldn't do this. Or, so. We recoded the things that would have been coded in, in the grant numbers. Into the youth program numbers if that's what I've spent, and, and so that's why it's, it looks the way it does, so moving forward should be more clear. And this actually will come up in our budget discussion and why I've set the youth budget at a different number is, is to reflect. Which is a pretty consistent trend year over year, which is to get a certain amount, you know, fifteen thousand, one transfer percent from another, twenty from, from outside grants, so. So it's all part of a, just trying to tidy up how we do things and maybe a little more transparent, um, but I hope they should. Become more obvious as we move forward.
Yeah, I, I have two, two comments on that, yeah, it would be. Do, do, most of the grants, the grants specifically say, comes from, let's say, friends, the grant money is for X, is it only specified, so what, is it just handed to the library to use as a which? That's what's in.
Yeah. Well, what's typically normal is, 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 is not what we're hoping to do in the future, so I can speak to the, uh, future more than the past, I think typically, yes, in the past, it would have been a request. A specific request, so then when the funds are given, it's designated for that, uh, we're going to change now a bit, we want to make it more clear what a grant is and what are friends. Uh, I, I, I personally don't think of friends. Um, funding is a grant, is the same as a grant, it doesn't have the same parameters that an outside grant has when you make that. Um, application, so, so when we talk of grants moving forward, we're talking about specific, uh, you know. Grants outside of the institution, so whether it's I C F L, it's a federal, state grant, those kinds of grants. Uh, when we talk of friends, we're talking about one of our two friends groups, you know, making funds available to us, which the admin team will, will disperse it. Depending on departments and then we're getting requests from those departments, right, uh, so it is going to change a little bit, but yeah, to answer the question of. What happened before is that, yeah, they would be designated, like, we would be asking the friends to pay for such and such a summer reading. Program or event, and they would say yes or no for that kind of, um, form, um, and that, that is typically what happened. I mean, I can't give you the exact numbers, but I mean, the, all that money, twenty, ten and fifteen. Very significant, majority of that goes to programs. I'm on, then there are probably other grants. That might hit I T department, might hit other departments, but we're looking at that to see, you know, to see how we can make the most of grants to, to support multiple departments rather than just programs, so.
Yeah, I can say also, I guess it would be helpful if you get grant money in, that it goes into the. Called general, uh, it's called general ledger account numbers, we're called the lines, where actually gets expended because that way if the grant money's not there somewhere. Well, at least we know, we used to spend thirty thousand here, now we only have. Smaller amount that sends, I guess, if that's what we're saying, so grant money comes in, then we're going to apply it to the expenditure line that applies, not, not to its own name, okay. I think that probably helps for historical budgetary to try and, I guess, project future. That's the plus.
So, I haven't been paying attention, but, um, four-fifty-five income grants, four thousand this month for Idaho Commission for Libraries. Do they get money every month, or? How much does, do they get, because I think the state, I remember reading the state of Idaho, the legislature is, uh. Significantly cutting I O Commission for Libraries budget. What's like you did with that, it's just coming here, but. Well, how much money do they give a year and is it a risk of going away?
Um, I don't know how much they give a year, I know that these are, like, this, when they say STEM grants, these are the program department, you know. Applying for grants that have been made available, summer reading, specific to STEM STEAM programs, so. Like, it's not that, it's not a monthly type of thing, it's all specific grants that I C F L has out there. Um, they, they typically have the programs, although I know I C F L's got some for tech, um, access to digital content and tech and stuff, so. Yeah, I'll be, it's not a, it's not a. Monthly thing, it's an application process for specific grants that I C F L puts out. And I haven't heard any feedback from I C F L regarding. Funding. Will come to the state and stop them. I know this. I know this issue, so.
If you, you have another comment. Oh, I think I just asked you plus. Is that common, unique? That's just sort of company, you need.
I, I didn't have anything specific on this, it seemed like, um, I see we approved the finances and after about this paper, we never talked about it, but, um. I, I guess, I guess this is showing, again, this, this is showing the, uh. Amount of money we got from. Patrons paying for lost books or, uh. Is it finds also, or?
No, so it's basically, it's the, it's, it's the lost books and it's showing you, like, we're getting more. Um, set. Back as the actual material being returned as opposed, I mean, we waived some, that's the way it fall. We'll get the material back, that's that call, but sometimes they'll pay it up, so we'll get the cash, so this is just showing the three different. Ways that we're recouping, um, the lost and damaged material, and I think there's a fee for, or is it fifteen dollars? So it's fifteen dollars from the co, this company to do that process, so for patron, so they reach out to two patrons that month, they're invoicing us thirty bucks. Then, yeah. Anyway, but, uh, yeah, so if, if they're, uh, if they're sending out. Ten. To collections that month, then it's hundred fifty bucks, so, so part of the, the amount that would have been invoiced is their service to us, and then the part that's showing us how much we're making. Uh, in, in, and then, and again, a lot of it is the materials, that may be the final materials. They need to, and they turn them.
If I'm looking at correctly, the internal investment, we get fourteen dollars back for every one dollar we spend. Is that right? Okay, thank you.
And then the follow-up on that is there's some. Other bar missing of, uh. The total number of books that we've lost, that, instead of just the ones that were returned, what's the outstanding?
I lost, I can add, we can try and add that, so you're asking, what's currently outstanding in that?
What's the loss we have right now, the lost books?
Listen, Dr.
We're not able to change this particular graph because it is not created in-house by us. This is the graph that is provided by unique management system. And so imagine even if we requested that, they would say no.
That's, we can not, oh, we'll get the information.
And for the discussion regarding the C L N's financial statements. Okay, let me see if I can get this correct this time, um, without objection, the C L N's financial statements for the period. May twenty-twenty-five are accepted by unanimous for the set. Um, in Yasmin Eras's absence, I would like her to know that she has been reappointed, I see. Congratulations. It was kind of her percent. Okay, this is a directory report, yeah.
All right, uh, just a few updates since the last time. I'll start with a, so, I see, I'm grateful again to my communications department, bringing together the brochure. Uh, I'll just add a comment about the current cardholder, uh, uh, situation. Um, because we're still showing the current cardholders, new cardholders on that first page there, and we have a little footnote about the new policy, so. I do want to publicly thank my I T manager, Mark, he did an excellent job, he, he, so he was tasked with testing and confirming our ability to actually implement the mining card policy. As well as mature content collection policy, so happy to report that, that through his efforts, we, we can confirm that it is possible. To, to set up within COHA, you know, the parameters to make it work, so. So we got that far and we did bring it to, uh, C I N because it's part of the process, so the tech side of things was presented. Um, to C I N yesterday. And all the members accepted the technical explanations. But, uh, however, you know, as was to be expected, they continued to discuss whether or not C L N's policies are impacting their patrons and. Um, a little bit of that discussion, I guess we can have at some point, but. Uh, well, we, C L N is prepared to move forward with the implementation, however. In light of yesterday's C I N meeting, I am now discussing next steps with my staff and, and maybe another month before. Uh, we implement because of C I N, I'm marching along, so C I N, yeah, it happened yesterday, so it's quite fresh, we're still processing. Um, but just, I just want to also clarify, I know we get a lot of, I know the board gets a lot of, um. Comments come in, uh, about the eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-one minor card. On the current tiered system, I just a green pie there. And I just, I mean, I just want to make sure it's clear like that, that's not, that's not really, um. So, that's not, that's not data that proves anything about why they chose that card, so. Um, it's very likely that the majority of the eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-one minor cardholders chose that card, card in order to get general access to the C L N collection. Because their choices are either the minor section, zero to twelve or whatever, and then the teen section. And then the general, like, everything else, so it's a bit of a stretch to say that the eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-one card members. Are being denied what they're asking for in that card. In the new policy, because the new policy has a part which is the general access part, which gives them access to follow C I line, right, so. We would have to dig, yeah, I'm working on digging deeper because what you would need to know is how much of that, how many of those eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-one card members. Are using that card to access the resources to place holds outside of C L N. Because those are the kind of restrictions that are currently built into the policy because of the nature of consortium and tech side of things. So I just don't, I just don't want people to be confused, that it, it isn't one, it, it's not eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-one. Minor card holders who will automatically lose what they asked for because we don't know. Whether or not eight thousand of them simply chose that card. Because it was the one that gave them general access to C L N's collection, which is what the new card. Policy does, it gives them general access to the collection, so obviously mature content collection comes into play, but I just want to put that out there because I, I still get. I see it in the newspaper and I, and I, you guys get the, these comments. Uh, there's just a little bit of confusion about that, so the eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-one minor cards isn't a number you can take and simply say that. The new policy is denying that number of people what they asked for because that's not, we don't know what they asked for. We can only extrapolate, um, why they chose that card. All right, uh, mature content collection, the rooms, shelving, furniture and signage have been installed. Um, so obviously in the post falls branch, uh, the, still the only items currently designated for it are the sixteen. That were done through request relocation. Uh, and those are sitting in technical services right now, we're processing, uh, and some of the. I, I know it's taking a long time, well, maybe not, I didn't measure time, uh, but some of this has to do with simply a lot of the text, like, even Mark's ability to do, um. Material type. Parameters, right, the mature content collection is, is going to be a material type, and it's, it's set at that level, like, like back in the day. If, if we had a reference book that didn't get to circulate, there would be a material type of reference, and then, and the, and the I L S would understand. So, so there's a bunch of things going on, just moving in that direction, but, um. So that's the mature content collection, the room is there, shelving's in there, furniture's in there, and the signs on the door. Uh, and with the upcoming hiring of the collection development manager, the review of the materials. Uh, that are not part of a request relocation, but our, our internal review of materials will obviously be expedited once I have, uh, someone who can do it more often than I can. Um, there will also be a meeting with the post falls staff ahead of opening the special collection room, so I can't give a launch date or anything like that. Um, because as you may recall with my directive at the beginning, there were three prongs. One was collection development, one was library layout, and the other was staff responsibility, so. It's important that the administrative staff meets with the post falls staff to, to talk about what that responsibility is in relation to the room, uh, because that's part of the. Part of the problem, one of the problems, so, so, I, I mean, we're, we're moving towards it. Things don't always go as fast as we like, but there's some things that are out of our control. Uh, interviews for the collection development librarian are scheduled for next week. Adult programming staff, so you, um, you remember I brought you adult programming job descriptions for internal U C, so, so we're working on that. And we're hoping that the internal placement of the adult programmers is done by the end of the month. Uh, but there are two that will be external, just the way it worked out with the internals, uh, so there are two external postings. Uh, but we're still hoping to be able to wrap up the adult programming, uh, positions and, and hirings. Uh, certainly, if not the end of the month, then early into July for the external ones. Strategic plan. Um, together with my communications department. We continue to try and get this online survey. Much as possible, right now, there's only five hundred and forty-six responses to date. We're not particularly crazy voter satisfied with that response rate, but we're trying to figure ways to, to, uh, help improve that. Um, we have installed the kiosk at each branch. Um, to try and get, you know, the in-house, uh, people, but also, uh, the big, we're trying to be as involved as we can in the community, uh, my communications department and I. Uh, um, we were at a booth, we hosted a booth that they between New Resource Fair and Post Falls on the twelfth. Uh, the big one's going to be the North Iowa Fair, C L N will have a presence there, but then all the survey, you know, front and center throughout the fair, so we really, we want to get our numbers as high as possible. Um, for the, for the survey. The strategic plan team has initiated a, a focus group, a focus group team, so there, there's, uh, a team that's been struck. Uh, within C L N to, to, to facilitate the focus groups, uh, just so that we have. You know, if the team does all of them in the different branches, then they get consistency and that sort of scientific. Experiment side of, of survey and, and data, and data, um. Tree will, so, so, yeah, there's a focus group team struck and we'll be looking at, uh, three focus groups, if I remember correctly, three of the main brand, the bigger branches. Um, and then two, uh, two or one or two, I think, of the, of the, the smaller branches, and that's just a, a first round, see how those go, and then. And this will continue from now on into September. Um, and the stakeholder conversations have also been initiated, that's, um, going to be, uh, led by the assistant director in collaboration with the supervisor, the branch supervisors in each branch. Who, who, obviously are the ones who have the best relationship with the stakeholders in that community, so. Um, so that's all in the works. Uh, C I N, I'll say much about it, I think it comes up later, but yesterday's C I N meeting, there was a discussion. About the dissolution of the consortium, and this is something that each director was tasked with bringing to their consortiums, your body, which of course is members of the board, so. Uh, that's something to be discussed. Uh, and then last of all, we received the lease renewal for the property on which Harrison Library resides. Uh, I'm discussing with legal counsel and I'll bring it forward to the trustees next meeting, which happens to be in Harrison. So we have a new lease, the current one ends, uh. My, I think my end of, end of November, but the, 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 the one that's being proposed is starting fiscal year October ones, we have time to look at it, right, I send off the council to have a first look. And, uh, it's, it's just a, a renewal on that property there, I think it's the Harrison branch. So, and that is.
I have a point question, is it, is there a way to get the strategic plan, the survey, or they're helping, they advertise it in a newspaper or social media or their.
the advertising in a newspaper or social media or there are other ways to more or less draw from the public at large, not necessarily library users all the time? So users obviously want anything and everything you could possibly get more. Somebody public out there is unaware of the survey or they're indifferent. Or they don't like it because they don't want to pay taxes because they don't come in here. So is there some way to, are there ways to get the population as a whole greater awareness of the survey?
Yeah, I mean, that's the intention where we're, I mean, I know it goes on our social media. It was, I think we ran a newspaper ad once, maybe drew on big ones or or consistently, but yeah, I mean, that's the ultimate goal. I mean, for us, it, we want the you know, we might not get the same, you know, response level that our trustees get when they run, you know. But that, yeah, we want to get it out into into the community. I think the fair and other other community events where we'll be on there onsite, we have we set up iPad versions of it so we can, we can be there and promoting it. We also have a little QR code thing that's, we're trying to send out as much as possible where people can just scan it and do it. So yeah, the ultimate goal is to is to hit a good number of respondents. And and actually, I mean, I can bring more stats for it as we go through, but I do, I actually think our stats for in-house responses is actually pretty low. Most of the five hundred, so that we're getting it aren't being done, it's not to say they're not users, but I'm just saying is not being done at the kiosk in onsite, they still give you users because they're taking the QR code and doing it at home. But we're certainly open to any ideas and, you know, and the trustees certainly can can spread the word as well. I mean, if you want to get, you know, into the community as much as possible.
On the strategic plan surveys, how do the numbers compare to five years ago when they did the strategic plan? I don't know how many respondents they got or whether they went a longer period of time.
I'll have to look into, I haven't checked out.
And then the other question I was going to ask is, are you, are you getting some good candidates for the, I guess you're going to interview, so you must put yourself for the.
Yeah, we have five, we have five candidates. Some are out of state, so the first round's all, I get one's virtual. One and, and we had, I think we shortlisted to five, so there was also eight or ten. Don't quote down that number, I guess, but yeah, we definitely were interviewing five next week.
Yeah, just the fancy Nancy story on the back for the located one or two. Dress up like fancy Nancy, she discovered the books. I suppose to show the impact that books on children.
Okay, well, the remote won't work. Hold on a second. Someone else needs to put a V in front of there. There we go. That's the big questions. Okay, we'll move on now to the direct, I'm sorry, the Spirit Lake Library tour and report. And I'm assuming that's Carol Ferguson giving it.
I see. There's a chair coming anyway.
Sure. The chair. So unfortunately, the audience won't be able to see it, there's a slideshow, I assume it is on the screen up here.
Are these on?
These are only.
Talking to them? Not just the yell or do you want me talking to Mike?
As long as everybody can hear you.
Okay. Okay. This is our, hi, I'm Carol, I've been with the library almost ten years. This is our twenty twenty five Spirit Lake Library Board Report. I'm going to talk to you about staff, highlights of our adult programs, youth programs, homeschooling, outreach and our local community. So off to the left here, we have Saka, who's a circulation person. She was laid off in October and has been rehired back in March. We have Rain in the next picture over, she's a circulation, she's been with the library three years. We have Elena, who does our youth programming, she's been here two years. At the end, we have Nicole here, who's been with the library five years, and she's just currently starting doing our adult program. So this is a program we did, it's the computer basics. We teamed up with our senior center next door and we basically taught very basic computers. That's what they wanted, how you turn it on, how you start an Excel spreadsheet, how you start a file, how you delete a file. It was a very well attended class for us. We also have Brad Sando, who has our local pottery shop down here, he also has a small band. He comes a couple of times a year and does programs for us. This was all fifties music that he did, was a great hit. We also have for our adult program, we have a chess club that meets once a month. We usually have about thirty five to forty participants in that. This here was the final and these, between these two players here, and they wanted the winner won that chess set down there. We have the oldest players up in their eighties and the youngest player is about six. We also have a cooking club, we've just recently started. It, they decided what cookbooks for about six months in advance of what they want to do. And we set the cookbook out, they come out during that month and pick what recipe they want. Then the end of month, they bring those recipes in and, or the actual food, using the recipe. And we get to sample the food. Youth program. So one thing we did this year during our story time was we had our local fire department come. And they showed the kids the equipment, they got to see the equipment, they got to go look inside the ambulance and see what it was like. The, our local fire department donated books to us, so we had those in our system. So they read, did story time with those books, was a great, great time. We also had a local farm bring some animals in. One time we did bunnies and so the kids got to touch the bunny and see them. And the other time we bought, brought a cow with her cat. So the kids could come and see the cow and touch the cow and learn about cats. We also team up with, at Christmas time, the town does a Christmas parade. And we team up with Spirit Lake Chamber. And we do story time before the parade, we have Santa, kids can come see Santa sit on his lap. And our Spirit Lake Events donates crafts, and so the kids can also do crafts. We also team up with Farragut Park Ranger Station for our outreach programs here in the left. Is there in the, it's winter time, so they're in their visitor center doing some projects. And then in the summertime, we go to Farragut Park and do different projects that are exploring nature, it's called Nature Berry. We also team up with our Spirit Lake Elementary School and do STEM night. So that's different people from companies within the organized or within the city who come and display, like we have the electric company there and they talk about electricity. We go there with magnets and circuit boards so the kids can experience that. And we have solo cups that they can stack and that's always the hit is how they can, how high they can stack the solo cups. We also did an outdoor bike rodeo, so we teamed up with our police department, they're under the white canopy there. They handed out little license plates for the kids. And then on the far right is a local bike shop called Fresh Airy Bikes. And they looked at all the bikes to make sure they were all roadworthy for the kids. And we also having handed out bike helmets. And here they're doing an obstacle course where they learn about stop signs and where you can go and not go on the road. We also did an outdoor rocket making. So the kids made rockets and then we shot them off later on, kids thought that would be great. Homeschooling. So a couple, two highlights that we did, one was about dinosaurs, about omnivores, carnivores, did the history of the dinosaurs. We also did a water experiment. So if you know, in between, there's empty cups and there's towels in, so it wicks the liquids into the empty cup. And you can see the results down here in the bottom for the cups. The demographics of Spirit Lake, the population as of twenty twenty four is two thousand five hundred and sixty six, not a huge town. Average household income is six seventy six thousand four hundred and ninety five, we have eighty percent, eighty one percent homeowners. We still have our mortuary and going on for our sewer, city's working on trying to expand that. And once that is expanded, then I'm sure our city will grow more. We team up with Cup of Grace, which is a local organization that does food, they have meals once a week on Tuesdays for the community. They are bank does donations for them and then they turn around, give it to Cup of Grace and Cup of Grace donates lunches for us for our story time kids. And when we were open in the afternoon, they also provide snacks for the kids after school. Staff, highlights of adult programs, youth programs, homeschooling, outreach in our local community, are there any questions?
So there was a lot of interesting programs, youth and adult, so you did a lot, but so my basic interest in that is, does it get more people to come to the library?
Yes, it does.
Does it get them reading books?
Yes, because at the programs, we have different books there for them to check out for suggestions.
Okay, because we did, two years ago, we did cut back on the programs budget. It looks like you're getting creative and finding ways to do it without spending more money.
There's no other question to support. I'm Carol, thank you for the presentation. The presentation is followed by a tour of the library, which is followed by a break. So I think fifteen minutes is probably the probably right now between touring the library, taking a break. So we can reconvene, let's say at three seventeen. It's three seventeen, we'll reconvene, it's time. Okay. Now, the most exciting part of the agenda. I guess that was my very same, yeah. Fiscal year twenty eight and twenty six budget discussion. And we got a lot of information, you know, packets here. Now, the director can start us off on where we're going with this, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
I have some confusion here and there.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Again, it's, so the, I mean, the main sheet is this one. This is basically showing what was asked, would give us a three percent, a two percent, a one percent. You'll notice if you look at it, that there's no difference. Three percent, the two percent, the one percent.
We have a slush from there.
Yeah, and so, so this, so this is important, we can look at this, but the impact is really on the big sheet that was given out. And so this is showing what happens if you choose the one, the two or the three. And you'll notice that the five year projection kind of is similar in the sense that at one point in time in the next six years on here, you're asking, I'm asking for three, two or one in various positions, right? So having said that, the the way this is happening is is basically because of the ICRIM money, which was set aside for replacing for damaged collection material. And then there was a little sheet, which you don't want to put the job. It gave the ICRIM number, which is this one. The job ledger report, really small thing, it gave the ICRIM number at the bottom of two twenty nine, seven oh, two twenty eight, seven oh six. Although I was only working on the big sheet with the number of two twenty five. But what I'm showing there is that if, if you were to only, if you were to approve one percent, I'm going to use a hundred and sixty three thousand eight hundred and thirteen of the ICRIM money to get through my year. If you give me, sorry, careful with my language, if you approve two percent, I'll use a hundred and twelve thousand of it. If you use three percent, I'm going to use sixty thousand. And what that's going to allow me to do is to maintain the collection development budget over the whole course of this time period. While still obviously doing other things I want to do. And one of the things you asked me to do is to sort of show you my priorities. So the priority is obviously on here is that I'm prioritizing my human resources, which are the staff. So on this bigger sheet, the the only three, I sort of just truncated all the Excel file. The three things that are changing across the five year projection is salaries every year giving the two percent merit, I'll take the yes for part time, and the two point five percent cola, the four point five percent increase in that line, utilities. Three, I just calculated it in a three percent on utilities. But you'll see utilities as the one six hundred and twelve thousand, that's the whole that's the whole total facilities maintenance number, but I didn't add, I didn't apply three percent to that whole section, I only applied three percent to utilities. And then I applied seven percent to insurance. So those are the only things changing over the five year. And again, this is just projection, this is just to give, because if I only gave you this, you would think, well, hey, let's just do, let's just do one percent, which is fine. But if you do one percent, then you have to look at the future of what it would look like. And that's assuming no other lines change except for salaries, utilities, insurance. So the budget you're looking at here, those numbers would stay the same throughout the five year projection, just just to give a scenario as a model. And I only built in increases in those key areas. So I mean, just to say perfectly clearly, I do prior, for me, the priority is the first most valuable resource is the human resource. And then after that, we look at the other thing like the book resources, digital resources, you know, facilities are the resource. But the number one priority is obviously the human resources, the staffing. And so that's why there isn't really any change in a lot of other areas. And again, the way we're able to do this is because of the collection development money that's available and and using it over time to keep the collection development number healthy, a healthy number, which on this sheet is two hundred and forty thousand a year on visible materials. So we can talk about that, but that, that's just to give you, this is why I'm presenting it in this way. Because it's obvious from the main sheet that no matter which percentage you choose, I'm going to still create a balanced budget to get my priorities, the institutional priorities secured. And then obviously, I would encourage the three percent because it's the healthiest moving forward. And then, you know, in fiscal year twenty seven, two percent, this year twenty eight, I'm not, I'm saying we're locking ourselves into this, but it just shows that, you know, that that's what the projection will be like. And obviously, there will be areas where besides insurance, utilities and salaries, where we might have to make adjustments where that's possible in the two percent and three percent scenario. It's impossible in the one percent scenario, as soon as we hit fiscal year twenty seven and the one percent this year, we immediately go into the negative. Right, so so that's, that's what that big chart is showing. I will make it just a comment on, so the other one you got was this little community library network sheet. And this was just to kind of show policy shows a few things, it shows how much the taxpayer pays for the library versus the school district versus that I see. So that that's.
Is that the average, is that the median amount? The taxpayers pay in to support these different institutions? Because obviously, people's house values vary and so not everyone pays the same total.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a, is a single, is it a single property? Yeah, we used a single property in both of those, in post fall and in Rathram.
Okay, okay.
So we used a single property just to give it, this is just to give an example, well, I just want to kind of I just, it's important that the taxpayer understands what the library is asking and if we ask for something, what it really means versus what they paid the school district or the college, and those would be the two other things that were more similar, we didn't add fire department, because that's not really, that's less apples to apples in that case. So so there's that, but on the flip side, to me, this was the intriguing one. Because I know the promise to the, to the taxpayers, we're not going to raise taxes, right? And that's fine. And then we talked about, oh, do we take three percent, do we take one percent or two percent? And I just wanted to look at this because to me, this kind of puts that whole philosophy off to the side because it really, because in in twenty nineteen, we took three percent. But it didn't increase taxes in post falls or Rathram. And the following year, we did, we took zero percent. And the following year, we did, we took zero percent, but it increased to ten percent of both well and fourteen percent Rathram. In twenty twenty three, we took zero percent and it decreased fifty one percent. In post wall, but went up seventeen percent, so I'm, I'm just saying that whether the taxes are raised for the individual homeowner. Doesn't really have direct relation to whether we take three, zero, one or two at the library level. Like, there's so much other, so many other calculations going on. In other place that are under our control. And so I, again, this was, I can't take any prick for this, this is my financial office presenting me with this. Uh, but to me, it was important because the, the comments are always like, we won't, we won't take our three percent. Because we, we don't want to raise taxes for the homeowner, but that's actually not what's going to happen. We have no idea necessarily what will happen until the levy is, all those calculations are handled. So I, I'm hoping we can just look at it more like, we, we can take one, we can take two, we can take three. And we want to show our, our taxpayers that we're, we're looking long term, we're trying to be responsible. We're, we are investing in certain aspects of the library. We're not, we're trying to make it a tight budget. You know, we think, I think perhaps each line as we go through, but, but so that was the kind of the main document, I think that we sent.
Open with a question. I'm not sure I understand this I print balance we have on the one sheet of two hundred and almost twenty nine thousand dollars. Is that, is that money that was given to us from I print as a part of our claims? We haven't spent it yet, and is it specifically earmarked for collections? Okay, and is, and is there a duration, is that when we have to spend that money or is it, we've already gotten it? And where is it, where is it lying?
Yeah, we have it, yeah.
Is that, is that one of our balances?
It is on the balance sheet, I think, but.
Yes, so the job ledger goes through what we've already spent and what we've already received. So we received the full amount from the insurance company. We're not anticipating receiving any more money. So we receive at the bottom of the job ledger, you'll see one million, two hundred and thirty two thousand, six hundred and eighty nine dollars, thirty seven cents. From I can for the damages to the libraries, post falls and apple from the flood. And we have spent in the debit column, one million, three thousand, nine hundred and eighty two dollars and seventy four cents. So over in the net column at the bottom, it shows we have a credit because that hasn't been spent yet. Two hundred and twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and sixty three cents. That is sitting in our. Basically, we think that kind of like a savings account. So, you know, we have a checking account, but then we have our account that has ten different. Accounts and that. So if you look at the balance sheet, you'll see that that money is sitting in there, waiting to be spent. And it's all meant for collections.
So, so then, is it so, I'm understanding that we're just trying to spread out. Collections expenditures over three years, we'll say, or several years, I guess. So that no matter how we slice it, we still have the same number, the same revenue. Whether we chew up a lot of it by only taking a one percent increase, or we. Use up a lesser amount by taking a larger tax increase.
Yeah, and, and if you look, like, to me, I mean, it's obviously, it's a, it's a significant talking point to be able to say how much, how much does a library spend? On physical materials. Um, and quite often in many places, that's, that's like a, you have to spend like four point two percent cap, I guess. So, so that is, sorry, it's an important number. The difficulty was that year over year, you always saw the three hundred thousand number and maybe didn't realize that a hundred thousand was going. To electronic resources. So to me, like, in, in fiscal year twenty, twenty three, twenty, or specifically twenty four. Uh, this is twenty three, the number was, we spent two hundred and forty three thousand, three hundred and thirty seven on physical items. Our budget was actually, uh, three hundred and thirty two, we spent a hundred and thirty thousand on electronic resources. So I'm trying to keep it at that two hundred and forty thousand dollar level, right? Across as long a time as I can until we, until, when you get to, when you hit fiscal year thirty one. And on our, like, the estimated growth, which is going up, I think, I put six percent estimated growth based on the current one. So estimated growth. And depending on which percent you choose, right, there comes a point that far down the road where we no longer need the I print money. To, um, to, 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 to stay at that two hundred and forty thousand level. So it, it's a very healthy situation. The, the, the one thing that needs to be highlighted is that. Um, the electronic resources, which was never really broken out before, I have broken out now and I have it at fifty thousand. Which is significantly less. But again, it was a free call, it was our own decision to contribute X number to C I N. I'm looking at more from C L N's perspective, what do we want to do about electronic resources? And again, this also speaks to, you know, this speaks to the other issues about, well, you know. One of our minor cards doesn't give them access to electronic resource. Well, that's because it's tied to the consortium. If this fifty thousand dollars or whatever, let's say we decide we're only going to put fifteen, twenty thousand into C I N, should that be the case? Then we can put this money into electronic resources that are catered to our minor population, right? You know, age appropriate, all kinds of, we have more control over that. So, uh, there wasn't really. Very much in the electronic resources line, which wasn't just automatically going in big numbers to the C I N shared stuff. So, so. Area really where, like, what's actually being hit here? The one thing that's being hit is that when, in, in my budgets here, I'm not giving a hundred thousand plus. To the shared digital resources, right? I want to make sure that we can maintain two hundred and forty thousand. There was a time. Fiscal year, even fiscal year twenty, we spent three hundred and thirty three thousand, nine hundred and thirty six on books. Right, uh, the highest, I think, in the last, uh. The fiscal year nineteen, three hundred and ninety six thousand, three hundred and seventy. So in that year, our, our collection development budget was four forty six. We spent seventy thousand on, on overdrive and we spent three hundred and ninety six, three, seven, nine. So there were times in the past where we were healthier with collection development numbers. Uh, but on the other hand, I think to me now, certainly with my, my direction for the library is going to be quality over quantity. Right? So I think two hundred and forty thousand dollars for books is, is, is a certain, I wouldn't want to go too much lower than that, which is why this, how this budget is being structured. I want to keep it at that level so that we can, uh, you know. Maintain the ability to, to really, that's why it's all connected. This is why I'm getting collection development library, like, we're going to spend this money as best we can. To make sure we're looking at quality, making our collection as best as it can be at that price point. So, um, but again, that, that's the reason why, you know, you probably scratch your head and say, well, there, there's no other changes on here. But it looks exactly the same for every percentage and it is, right? All that's happening is I'm trying to maintain the collection development budget using the money that I gave to us for replacing our, our collection.
Let's do, one last question, I'll turn it just to. The percentage of money used to salaries or for staff. And the percentage of money used for collections, are they, are they similar to, what is the industry wide standards? Are they, are they closely aligned with the industry standard, meaning libraries, the whole? Where we, I think, one year we were fifty percent or fifty five or sixty percent percent, I forgot what it was. And what is this?
Like sixty three percent that we got.
Yeah, collections, collections.
Yeah, I mean, I, I figured the budget, oh. I think in the absence of a state, like a. Canada, when I was there, a province would set a standard and you have to spend a certain amount per capita. To, to be acknowledged as either, you know, a standard or excelling or, or the different levels, but you have to do that. So I, I'm not aware of a standard within the state saying a library has to spend this much on collections, right? So it's hard, if, if, if that's the case, then if we were to look at another library or district of a similar size, and they happen to be spending four hundred thousand on collections. I'm not sure we, we're looking at and say, oh, we're out of market, like, it's not, that one doesn't match up the same way as salaries. Like salaries, you can, you can say, well, how do we match up? We have the same number of full time employees, but we're paying our people less. So that one, you can do that sort of, uh, market assessment. Um, but with collections, it's harder because unless it's established that you should spend or have to spend this much. Right? It really becomes more a question of what's, you know, but to me, this is where, this is, there's some lines in this budget, which I, I, I can't be touched, right? I can't do much about utilities, I can't do much of those sort of things. The, the areas in the budget that I have control over are the ones that are really the, the library ones. Books, e resources, uh, you know, uh, supplies. Uh, the, the kind of things that, that we have more control over, that's why I have the wiggle room, uh, to do this. And again, if it wasn't for the, the I print, um, collection money, it would be a lot more challenging. Right? So, um, so that's what's happening, but again, just, I, I'm not sure we mentioned, I think last time, the first draft, we had a three percent cola. This is actually, so just to speak about the salaries, uh, it's a two point five percent call. We, 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 we assessed it against, uh, the C B I, I think it was, and, yeah, so it was, so we dropped it to two point five. And I just want to talk a little bit about what's actually happening in there. So it's not, so that it doesn't look like it's, it's just moving in the same direction. So, so the change in salary does include the question development manager. It includes the H R specialist salary, uh, it includes, um, the hiring of other positions. Related to the changes in programming. Um, and also it includes that, well, we were, it was a request to, to add hours. So there's an addition of hours built into the salary number, which is, uh, by, I think there was three particular, um. Branches that there was an increase built, built into here that there'd be an increase in hours of certain staff in order to, uh, to achieve numbers. So there's a lot going on in the salary line this year. I think if we can do it, then he, moving forward, the five year projection is to have that much movement in the salary. I'm trying to establish things, you know, we kind of honestly, once and for all, but to get us in a healthy position where it can just be the coal and step. There's more than coal and step happening here because we're, we're adding hours, we added a couple of positions. So, so I'll speak to that, just as far as hours are concerned, because I thought that was a specific request. We're looking too much into the details about it. I'll just say that we're basically adding twenty two hours, uh, three hours at. Five of the, oh, six of the branches and four hours of one of the branches. And, and this just relates to, the focus was really the, the comments we got and the feedback we got about next, being next to schools. These hours are actually, that's not Sunday, these are hours, the, uh, shifting the schedule. Um, so that the library will be open after school, right? So, and I'm going to, yeah, questions about that I can answer, but I just want you to know that in the salary line, if you're looking at the projections twenty seven, twenty eight, seven, twenty seven to thirty one. That's just the four point five percent happening. I'm just trying to keep it stable, you know, reward our employees, you know, high levels of retention. And, you know, this particular year built into the salary change is a lot of other stuff. Positions, extra hours, um, couple internal, uh, changes in, in step, so.
So. I was a little confused, uh, you kind of said it how on, um. Your line by line budget, six oh nine, physical was three oh five thousand and F Y twenty five. You dropped it to two forty, so you weren't really dropping it, it's that you were splitting off.
Yeah.
Electronics, but how much for electronic, uh, collection? How much do you think was spent out of that three hundred and five this year? Maybe, maybe you said for F Y twenty five. What, what was the physical collection and what was electronic?
Yeah, so like, like today, currently, we spent a hundred and ninety six, one, five, well, current, so, oh, we, we, so. Uh, one ninety six, one five, three, and like I said earlier in the meeting, we've only put fifteen thousand. Towards C I N overdrive, uh, and we, and.
So what was planned, I guess, is the other part.
Oh, well, well, okay, so, yeah, I mean, to, um. The average over the last eleven years was seventy eight thousand going overdrive. There were some years where we did, the highest we ever did was one hundred and seventy five thousand in fiscal year twenty three. So we put a hundred and seventy five thousand to overdrive that year and we put two hundred and eighty three thousand in the books. So. That, that, again. My decision to prioritize C L N is helping me to be able to drop that number down considerably. I don't even know what the future necessarily is of, of, of the consortium, but in my mind. In order to prioritize my staff, um, you know, and, and keep a healthy budget, which is responsible. And, and honoring, honoring our, you know, our taxpayers. That's the place where I'm dropping, dropping that number considerably, right? So typically, we would have spent average of eighty thousand, but in the last couple of years, it was over, it was over a hundred, one, two, three. Last four years, it was a hundred thousand plus. And I'm just making sure, like, I want to protect our physical collection, quality over quantity, keep it at two forty. And then the remainder is basically fifty.
But what I see. This year, if you were, if you would have spent seventy eight thousand overdrive, it would have been two twenty seven for physical. To add up to three fifty, unless the overdrive was coming from something else also.
Well, the problem with this year is that, uh, not the problem, but I print had, there was fifty thousand from I print that was put into it. The fifteen, the fifteen thousand that we cut a check for just recently was the only contribution I signed off on. Since me being here, but before, there was a fifty thousand dollar, uh, amount that I print. A light bit money that was put towards electronic resources. And, and, and that's one of the things, like, anytime we talk about C L N. Paying, funding electronic resources is always, like, it's always going, it's not like we have Pupa. As well, and we're putting money in a Pupa on our own and it's just ours, like, it's always going into C I N. So in the absence of C I N documentation saying C L N must contribute, like, in some, like, where it says something like, C L N is going to contribute. A specific number to courier, a specific number to, to dues, that there isn't anything in the documentation. It's just a simply, uh, an internal free decision. Say, hey, let's, let's give a hundred thousand, a hundred something thousand, right? So. I mean, I can see from the budget in the past that we, I mean, it, it, before it was split up. We're talking four ten, four thirty five, four fifty two, four forty six, like, it was up with the plus fours. Like, four hundred thousand was collections. So at that time, maybe it's a little bit easier to siphon off a hundred thousand to go to C I N, but it, it, and then, but when. But twenty twenty five was already down, it was down to three hundred, but two hundred and five thousand is the lowest. It's been the last eleven years. So, which is fine, I'm just trying to make sure that I keep the physical collection at a reasonable number. That, that, I think it can work, I think it can work really well, because the whole focus of the new development, special development person. And, and the sort of the mandate from, from the, uh, in the community is quality or quantity. So we're really going to be looking at the two hundred and forty thousand and spending it the way we want to spend it, right? So I'm not really, I'm actually a particular worried about it, but it, it is a big difference from the past where you, we would have four hundred thousand plus. Sitting in collection development.
So, so my, I guess my point of what I was trying to find out is. We lost a lot of our physical collection during the water damage. And that money. That we had, and I, I guess I don't see it on the list here anywhere, I see it fifty thousand, but I don't see. But anyway, that was my question, was it, was any of that money spent on physical collection yet? And.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't say it here. But anyway, um.
Yes.
Two, two hundred and forty. Is not really getting us back on our. We're getting, starting to get caught up on our collection with what we should have been able to do. And we should have been able to go spend ten thousand this year. We're going to get caught up with a bunch of empty shelves. I, I'm not opposed to taking longer to do it, we did a good job. I didn't really want to do it until we had good policies. But I, I'm a little bit. Opposed to. Not spending money on the collection when we're already lost. You know, a very significant part of the question during the water damage, but instead using it for salaries. There's something a little bit off there. I, I can see how we can use it to bridge, but. The E drive, the E collection, if it's going to C I N and we don't know the future of C I N. Like, hold off on that or just have it be our own and instead of giving it to C I N until we know. So I. Okay, dropping off a little there. The one question I wanted to ask was. The F T D full time equivalent. Numbers on the payroll, we had October. Numbers on the payroll that we had October, or say. Yeah, beginning of the year, October twenty two, twenty five versus F T E, October twenty six. More employees, do we have a bigger payroll estimated beginning of the year than what we had last year? If we let, we we did some layoffs. Arrange things, but do you have any F T E equivalent to compare? Of what you think you'll have. Which is what we did.
Yeah, I mean. I think we were sixteen, so we're talking twenty five, we're not talking before, we drop it down to sixty seven employees. But the addition, the only addition, I mean, there are some additions, but I don't imagine getting above seven. We're talking just total employees.
Forty hours or.
Like we, it's even less than sixty seven, when you, when you're doing F T E and.
Right.
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
I mean, we, I have, like, we have, like, these are the breakdowns. That we have for the hours changes, right? But we can get, like, we can get it to you, like, basically, the, the. There was a big drop, because I think it was over a hundred employees. It was, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
There were one hundred and two employees a year and a half ago.
Right.
And then a third of the employees left. There was turnover, and we did not replace most of those positions. Then we laid off eleven in August, and the whole reason we did that was so that we could. Increase the full time and part time employees that were left, so that they could get to. A wage that is reasonable, because we were paying below what McDonald's was paying for a lot of staff. So when I was doing payroll in September, I had a surreal moment. Because literally I was sending the last paycheck to one of the eleven that were let go. And then the next person got a significant increase because of the. Unfortunate, you know, letting go of that other person. So I was saying, we're sorry to see you go. Thank you for your sacrifice, because now this person has a living match. So we got down to sixty seven employees in October, and now we're up to about seventy three.
But but the sixty seven, there were still quite few that were half time or nineteen hours. So I I'm just trying to do F T E.
But you want to know how many full time employees?
No, the equivalent key. So if to get, if it took. Two point two employees doing eighteen hours a week to get forty hours, if there's some calculation you can give me. I'm just, I'm trying to see is our salary, is our staff grown, F T E staff grown? Between the start of this year FY twenty five, the estimated start of FY twenty six. Because we, because we, we cut back, we agreed to this, and Lindsay worked on it, and. We didn't really have the control, and you told us your plans, but. I'm just afraid we're growing. The equivalent, and and we're getting too big of a salary. Payroll. To keep having the county growth be able to handle it. What I would like is this, either. Either we're doing too much programs or adult and youth programs or something. We got too many employees. I don't want to have to go through layoffs again, I'd like to size it so that it could grow like you're saying, but I don't want to. Pick on my money that's supposed to be going to. Physical. Materials that were damaged. So I was hoping to use that I print money for better physical materials.
Yeah, while we're keeping our, the same and then over, but I would deal.
But, right, but I don't want to decrease and not have a chance of getting back. I would like to use that money. It was damaged, and yeah, we would lost. Jump video games, and we lost lost junk books, but let's use that money to buy classic books and good books. That maybe that we really want or the community wants. Instead of just not being able to buy as much. So that's my.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, I I see them as two separate things, like I. The I print money is for collections, and yes, if we weren't reducing anything, then it would just been over and above. We could have said, great. We have two hundred and twenty five thousand, we're going to actually have special projects, the quality children's literature, we're going to dump that money into. So that would have been a great plan, that's, that's not possible in this case. Instead, I agree, like, that. I haven't done the research or the data yet to think what we lost, but but if I, if I had a list of what we lost, I would just run that against the search stats, right? And say, well, yes, we lost all this, but we don't want to replace title by title, which that's not, so that's why I'm trying to say, like, the two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Is where we're at now. Right? Well. No, we did a two oh five, because we give a hundred thousand to, like, based on basically twenty five. Based on history, we would spend a hundred thousand on E resources, so theoretically, our book budget is two hundred and five thousand. But I'm reducing E resources down to fifty, so I could get collections up to two forty, and I want to maintain that over six years or whatever, until we can. Get out of the report, like, needing the I print to supplement that. So I, I mean, I agree with you. It would have been just faster, it would have been faster, because we just said, oh, we got this extra money, we'll put fifty thousand into this, I turned to my collection development library and say, hey. Here's fifty thousand bucks, I want you to bolster, you know, classic children's literature, the whole system. We're going to do that anyway, but we're going to have to do it more systematically with a maintained two hundred and forty thousand dollar budget, rather than. Two hundred or two hundred and five thousand plus, whatever I, so that that's what's going on in my mind. I don't see the salary part as kind of related to that. To me, I'm able to do the salary thing because of that, but I I don't, I don't compare the two, like. For me, I'm doing it more from the operational side, where I I think to myself, what does it take? To do certain things, like, I know you quite often mention programming, like, the biggest department is public services. Like, the biggest department I have is the department that has the frontline staff checking books in and out, right? So. Whereas the program department has, well, like we talked about before, they're going to have, you know, one youth programmer each, so that's seven. And then probably five, because it's not going to be one or each, so, you know, so a dozen. Programmers in the branches, but you 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 have almost triple that, probably. Frontline staff. So the biggest department as far as people are concerned is public services, where question development department is going to be one person, right? A tech department, marks department, one, right? And then I, so it's actually tech services, Carrie, she has, you know, a handful, right? So I look at it that way. So it's not me like, oh, full time equivalency, are we, are we spending too much on personnel? I look at it like, what personnel do I need to achieve this goal? And that's what I've been doing most of this year, but like, I need a question to go on person, I guess, that out, I need, I need adult programs, I guess, that out. In H R specials, so I'm putting those in place, and that's really what's happening in here, plus the addition of hours. And and all the work that Lindsay had done to get away from like someone working eight or seven, nine, it's all nineteen and a half. Twenty four, thirty two, forty, it's it's much more stable. And the whole reason for the stability is to be able to get past this year with these changes since I came. To go five years where it's, it's just a question of evaluations, and yes, you did great, here's the merit increase, here's the full increase, and boom. We're going, the only, the only thing that would change that would be, you know, scenarios where, okay. We, a department needs an extra person, right? So we added some feature, let's say, facilities or something, and. You know, Randy needs more than one assistant kind of thing. So there, I mean, I'm not saying that I'm locking myself into never asking for another position again, but I'm just saying. There's a lot of work being done this year, following on all the stuff Lindsay had done, to just keep that stabilization in place. I will go to bat, obviously, with a four point, you know, five, just call it merit every year. That's the more happening this year.
So back on the programs. Maybe you covered it, but FY twenty five, FY twenty six, we went for adult fifteen thousand to twenty thousand. And youth thirty thousand to fifty thousand. We had decreased that, and I see these grants coming in. Dear Mark for the programs, but what's the thinking? Why do you increase? Twenty five thousand between the two, because I, my thinking is, we brought that and use that money for salary.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, it goes back to the earlier conversation, I'm trying to make it more transparent, so. I guess historically, the board probably thought, oh, it only costs thirty thousand dollars to run programs, what an actual fact, that's costing, you know, seventy five thousand. Right? But you didn't know that, because forty five thousand dollars worth of grants coming up on this top line, and it's being expended, you know, what? It's being expended through G L codes into the exact same thing as if we were paying the max, makes sense. So I'm changing that so that what you see, so. Fifty thousand dollars for programming is the, is the number. And they're not going to go over that number. You know what I mean? Versus, but like you've seen right now, it was thirty thousand, but they're already one hundred and eight percent expended. And they're going to end the year, projected year end first, not going to be, it's going to be way over, but that's the real number. So I'm actually trying to control it more, and 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 in. In consultation or collaboration with the, with the program department, saying, hey. We need to make sure we're, you know, we're getting the grants we need to support, what we need to support, but it isn't some nebulous fund, which. The board never sees, right? So this fifty thousand dollars versus the thirty is a more, is actually, it's a more reasonable actual. Right? The, the, the collections, obviously, but. Yeah, so you, like, this is from my youth services department, yeah, youth service department, so the budget was forty five and twenty three, it was thirty five and twenty four, and it's thirty thousand and twenty five. The grants they got, they got thirty two thousand in grants in twenty three, seventeen thousand four, and then twelve thousand twenty five. That's one set of grants, and she had another call for grants number two. So in total. In twenty three, it was a hundred and one thousand dollars, and twenty four was sixty six thousand dollars, and twenty five was forty five thousand dollars, so. And that's all before I can, so my goal is actually to to set a number, like, actually create, give them, this is the budget. Right? And we're going to hit that budget, and if you, and if you need to get grants to hit that budget. Or if you get extra grants, it's going to go over that budget, that's fine, it's going to be transparent, right? That you'll see the programming cost, and and that, and that's the only way that you'll be able to really make the assessment, like, the metric, is it worth it? Right? You need to, in order to say, is it worth it, like, you'd ask the question today about, does it bring people into the library? I know what the board is saying, I I know there's a sort of traditional mandate that it's all about the books, but but programming does do, anything that we have. As a book on, on the shelf, if we do a program on it, then all we're doing is we're bringing that idea subject to life. And then there needs to be the tie in. I I would agree with the board that we would draw the line, we like, like, said, oh. We really want to be able to say we had twenty five youth in here, well, what did you do? Well, we did like a. Video game like Nerf challenge, okay, but there's no tie in, there's no, right? And that's fine, I I do have certain usable programming, but I think. To me, there's a certain extent where, like, if you did a barbecue, you know, some sort of barbecue session, or you bought a red seal chef and they did it, you said, well, what's the library do that for? But if you have a book truck filled with do it yourself, you know, barbecue, that's the time. So I think it is fair game for programmers to choose any part of the Dewey system or whatever, and and say, we're going to do a program about it. As long as that tie in, you know, translates into library usage, right? That's an important metric, and that's the metric that should justify spending X amount of money on program. Right? So, but you wouldn't be able to do that if you didn't, don't even know what, like, if you didn't know that the programming in order to, so. If the programmers presented, this is, like, they did, they came and they said, this is what we did last year. And you know, that's great, and that only cost you thirty thousand. Because that's what you think the budget, but it did cost a hundred and one thousand, and that's what I'm trying to do, I'm just trying to be able to to get more transparency. To the boards, that they understand. Not only what we're doing, but what it costs us to do it, right? And then we can start talking about what about the, there may or may not be. So the fifty, the the increase to fifty thousand is not really an increase to fifty thousand, it's a way for me to be able to say that. This is what the budget actually is going to be, and I'm trying to base it on actual, so last, this year twenty five. Well, it's gonna be twenty four, sixty six, nine, that was the actual, that's grants and the thirty five, right? So I'm trying to get a number that we can stick to, this is what, how we're going to operate programs. If they go over that budget. It's, I'm going to have to prove that it was from, like, I'm going to show you some grant. If they go over fifty thousand in this year twenty six, it's because I can show you, hey, this was an extra grant they got. And I'm going to provide a breakdown. Forty thousand was operation, and we had an extra ten thousand grants, but so, so the grant line, and we, and I think the top line there, we get. Twenty and grant fifteen from C L N friends and ten from post falls, but that's a pretty realistic. Actual year over year, that's typically what we've been getting year over year of last decade, right? So it's, that number's pretty stable, and that's forty five thousand. But I didn't increase the thirty and fifteen by forty five thousand. I increased it by. Twenty, yeah, twenty five, so, so. That's me saying, listen, we're going to be looking carefully at how grants operate, what we get them for, where they're deployed, I I'm hoping, as I say, for example. The post falls friends and the C I N friends still give us twenty five thousand. Right? But maybe not all of that twenty five thousand is going to be deployed in the program department, because it's going to be a different system, they're, they're going to make requests to the admin team. And we're going to say, well, what is marketing? Can we put more money in the tech, can we put more money here? Taking it away from just simply a, an additional programming revenue. Right? So that's kind of what's going on behind the scenes, and that's the reason why. A lot of this budget is based on analyzing the actuals. And just getting it tighter, in line with what is realistic, and also transparency. So it's kind of the two things I'm looking at. Yes.
Um, I'd like to answer trustee class's question about F T E. So I just did a calculation and. For last year, it was fifty four point two five. And this year, it's fifty seven point four one. And that includes the three positions, like the collection development manager, human resources specialist. And I'm drawing a blank on what would be, but. So that, that is where the extras are coming in. Does that help you?
Yeah. I guess. Where I'm kind of struggling with the extra twenty five thousand for the programming. Maybe could have gone to the salary, and maybe it doesn't matter what it needs to do, just go back and back. Elections that are being robbed from. Anyways, being taken to pay the salary, it's been taken to me, it's been taken from. It's supposed to go to collections. So if you could get extra grants. And actually ask for them. Lose grant money just because. They can't spend more than fifty thousand per program they used to, but if you could ask for grant money to go for collections. Or something, that that's, that's what I'd like to see, and then I'm okay, you know, with salary the way. But I just, I I feel we're being robbed from. For salary, we're being robbed from the I print money, that we may not. Recoup because it will have been spent. Just assuming we get six percent growth in the county for all these years, you've got till FY thirty one, but. But I I don't know that that's going to happen either, and. It, uh. You know, for example, the program, we had the senior center come. And do computer programming and doing spreadsheets and how to run the programs. The senior center is already doing that, why are we doing it? What did it cost us? Well, it cost the manager organizing it, I don't know what else it cost, but. I don't know if that got us anybody. More to want to use our books or come to the library, but I I'm just afraid we're. We're over funding programs, is my hesitation, and I guess I've said it enough, so the others.
I wa- I was concerned, especially when I first came on the board here, and I had this. Questioning, and it sounds like same thing with trustee plus, that we were simply spending, not simply, but spending a lot of money, let's say, on programs. To entertain people, to bring in musicians and just play music and go away. As long as, I think, I would feel more comfortable, if we're saying that most or almost all the money that's spent for programs. Actually contributes, let's say, for kids to literacy or to some attachments of the books in the library. That certainly would be much more appealing, and maybe that's where trustee plus is going, but. You know, is, this is not salaries, this is expensive to bring, and the sumos is. um, you know, is this is not salaries. This is expensive to bring and sumuluses is to pay somebody to come in and do something. But this fifty thousand and the twenty thousand dollar figure, is this mostly for bringing people in or for material repurchase to support program?
Yeah, it is. In, in youth services, it tends to be tangible, material stuff to help run the program now. Programming, it tends to be the more facilitation than a speaker or something to come in like, but, but it's. I mean, I, I agree. I just, all I'm saying is that in order to really assess it, I have to let it happen. And then, and that's kind of why I instructed the organizing of chart, right? I have the two department heads running uh, programming and I'm I have, that's part of this process. So setting the fifty thousand is just my way of saying the actuals validate that number and the consistency of the grant, especially the twenty thousand dollar grants, which is the real grants outside the institution, right? It, to me, it validates the fifty thousand. If, if anything happens in the future, it would actually be that assessment we're talking about. Like, we'd be assessing these programs and saying, what value did we get from this? Should we continue this, right? And see what things cost. I, I just don't think you could, we can't arrive with this. I think we're on the same page. I just, we can't arrive with that. If we kept it the way it was, which was always thirty thousand, and you don't really know that it was actually a hundred and one thousand because they got this number of grants for the friend, like I'm trying to tighten up that structure, both on the friend side and the grant side. And, and, and be able to give to the board a realistic number for what it takes to run program. So that when you see, whether you see it in, in the newspaper or one of our brochures, when you see the programs happening, that you can actually weigh that against the budget, which is fifty thousand, not some other number which you don't know. So now you know it's fifty and then we can actually go back and we could, you know, next time we do budget, we'll say, listen, we spent fifty thousand on program. This is actually what we did. And this is what it costs. Then you can say, well, you know what? This is a little bit superfluous. This is, right? I'm not, I wouldn't necessarily agree a hundred percent that we shouldn't bring in concert type stuff. The library is a cultural institution, right? If, if, if I was going to, if I could bring in handles Messiah, right? You know, even just parts of it. Writing free to our community, that prevents someone's like having to drive into Spokane, but there is value in those things. And libraries should look at their community and fill voids that aren't there. I agree. If, if Parks and Rec or someone over here is doing the exact same program, then yeah, we don't need to jump into that, right? But we do need to look at our communities, to the specific communities that each of the branches is in, and then say, hey, there's a void here, right? We don't have an artist in residence or we bring in a potter and they do pottery building. There is value in that. Even if they don't check out. So there, there are certain things that are in marriage with libraries and a lot of those will fall into sort of a cultural uh, side of things. But again, we, we want to look at that in the context of the budget, right? We set it fifty thousand. Next year, we look at all the stuff we did, how much each of it, how much each of those things cost, right? And you just have a better uh, foundation to make future decisions. This decision is to go from thirty to fifty is really me just saying, listen, I looked at the actuals. Fifty is a decent number, right? We're going to tighten up how grants operate here. And, and I want, I'm hoping that at the end of next year, right? I can show you that we spent fifty thousand dollars to actually run programs. And if we spend seventy thousand to actually run programs, I'll be able to say that, you know, we actually got extra twenty in grant funding and this is what we applied it to. And so, so once you see that, it's okay. This is, we can make more, you know, knowledgeable decisions about how to proceed.
Okay. I, I think we did see a transaction listing for programs back a week, maybe two years ago. And it showed maybe a musician coming in and shows the cost and they went from different to different libraries. And I guess part of it has to do with what is the role of the libraries? Is it an entertainment center? Bring people, performers or not? I don't, okay, I'm not answering that question. Where do programs fall into the traditional role, let's say, of a library where libraries usually have books on the shelves and people check books out and can use it, facilities for different reasons. And then one of the ones that ways back, it kind of always sounds strange because I don't think they people, but they go out and learn how to do fit and fall. Or we have staff members giving fit and fall lessons where is that the role of a library? I'm not, it's not an evil program, I'm sure. Or is that the role of some medical center someplace else or a senior center? So I think a lot of this, in my opinion, is skepticism of understanding what we're using that money for. And if we, wherever we get in this budget, it'd be nice next year at this time or a little earlier, go ahead and give us the, the transaction breakout of that line. What are we spending that money specifically on? And if it's getting the word I'm looking for. Manager specific or it's private, you know, we don't, you know, we don't share it outside to see what's amazing is getting paid, but I think that would help us feel worse, at least need more supportive of programs. It's, it's mystery area that in the back of my mind, it's not a traditional role of a library. Again, it has nothing to do with morality, right? I guess it's like, okay. What is, what is the library's role? Maybe part of the command of the strategic part, I don't know. Well, it has all the answers. Trustee, I'm sorry.
I suggested this earlier, but it makes it a lot faster when we're talking about something like salaries or collections. If we say line five hundred salaries or line six hundred and six hundred and five adult programs, especially for a new trustee.
So what we're going to are we going to give direction today on where to go? But my position after seeing the FTE, the only way we can add more FTE is have a bigger budget. And especially when we're trying to increase in the four point five percent. The, the cool and my, my coin call. Market value, but we don't have money to add to three more people and do all of this. It's obvious we're taking it this year or it's being proposed to take it from ICRIM. And I'm not confident we're going to be able to recover and put it back into the ICRIM. And maybe as a board, we will consciously decide we don't want to use all that money for or I mean, use all that ICRIM for materials. I was hoping to do it, but adding three people in, in the year is not sustainable without increasing our budget somehow. And I was hoping maybe legal would be less this year and maybe some other things would be less. And I, I certainly don't want to friends or somebody else say, well, you can only spend fifty thousand, so you're not going to do more than that. And then lose grants because they can't designate where it goes to. If somehow in the fifty thousand, you had the flexibility, if we get the money for grants to move it over to salaries or move it over to, well, actually, what it'd be is to physical collections, I think, is what I, I think it's being robbed from. But I think the board has to decide is adding three people worth taking money from the ICRIM collections fund so that we can keep this all going at the same increase, salary increases and other increases. That's the way I see it.
Yeah. So the three million, one fifty six whatever for salaries lining them five hundred. That does, that does incorporate the new positions, doesn't it? So we are, we are funding it. So it's covered.
Because I funds are being used.
I hope I didn't, I don't want to get the wrong, like, to me, they're not connected. So to it's, it's not like it's a choice. We can't use the ICRIM money for anything else. So the ICRIM money is for collections. So I don't look at the ICRIM money, say, oh, I gotta make adjustments to salaries because of that or not, because the, the salaries decision is completely independent from the other. I, this is what I want to have happen with salaries, right? Because in order to run this place, I need these positions, right? And the five year projection has no additional, the, the FTS would stay the same. Like, if I get this team, and this is my team of, of, to run this place, that's it, right? If, if something, so then, but then let's say something changes. So like, like I mentioned, like, something could happen in the subsequent years where all of a sudden we needed another person to accomplish a certain goal, but that usually aligns itself with growth. Right? A community got bigger and therefore that meant we needed like an extra more hours or something changed in the community typically related to grow, which causes you to have to say, oh, we need to provide more service and therefore another person. So to me, there isn't really that much risk. The, the addition of a, a, a full time, the increase of full time privileges in fiscal year twenty seven to thirty one should take care of itself because the causal factor will be a growth of some sort, which would end up paying for it, right? I'm trying, and I'm building on the work Lindsay's done over the years is basically to stabilize the personnel, right? To stabilize the personnel, right? So the, I mean, the addition of the collection development versus is a good example. I had a person who did three different things. And I come and I say this, and in order to put our, because question development was, was a big reason why you're all sitting here, right? We have to put the energy into collection development, both intellectually with a person that that's focused on that and then the funding necessary to, to build the collection. So, so once that's in place, it's not like the next year I'm saying, hey, we, we need more people to run this place. That, that's been the job Lindsay and I, since we've been working together is to almost like assess the efficiency of each of these departments and come to a conclusion about, you know, what it actually takes to run the public services department, what it actually takes to run it. And then make sure that we have those people in place. So said this, but I don't see a connection. It's not like we have choice, like, oh, we can take money out of ICRIM to pay sal, I wouldn't want to take any money. Like, you're not going to use grant money to pay salaries. That's not, that's not a bankable income. I have to use taxpayer, I have to use that base to pay these fundamental parts of the budget. Right? Grants can definitely support collections. If I can find a grant out there, imagine a grant saying, hey, we'll give you ten thousand dollars in order to build a collection for, you know, or Braille or something. So so there could be grants for collections. There could be grants for programming, grants for IT, all sorts of, we're not going to get grants necessarily. Like, I don't want to build my human resources, you know, that's how, to me, this is the part. Right? And I'm just trying, and it's not, it's not, it's not like it's it's not like our full time frequencies is off the charts, where we're, we're really being efficient, right? Our staff at where they work the front desk, like, their goal is to be as efficient as possible with the staff they have. There's no one sitting around wasting their time, right? Doing nothing. And that's, you know, thanks to Lindsay's assessment of that thing will be like, we're, we're really trying to make each department efficient. And that's reflected in, in these changes this year. And I would like to reassure the board that going forward, right? If we can establish it, there's less chance I'll be coming next year saying, hey, I need to add whole new position. Just, just surprise you with a whole new position. And then that really affects the salary. So uh, yes, ICRIM is enabling us to to do certain maneuvers. But it's not related. It's only because ICRIM is collections. And I guess the easiest way to put it is, yes, if our budget was really healthy, we could have spent all of ICRIM's money in one year to fund specific collection related projects. I'm just reassuring the board that my intention is still to fund special collection projects, but I have to do it more, you know, through this method. Maintaining two hundred and forty thousand year over year, taking a different approach to E resources. And for lack of a better term, like, you know, being that ICRIM money over a longer period. And if you only, if you approve only one percent this year, right? You can see what happens instantly. We go into the negative. Everything else staying the same with those three things I talked about being increased. But if you give two percent this year, we're pretty good. We have room, we have room to breathe. If you give three percent to you this year, we have more room to breathe. And if you look over the whole six years, uh, the, the projection is three percent, two percent, and then a bunch of four years worth of one percent. Just to me, just as a scenario, just showing the scenario. Yeah, predict the future, but that's kind of what's on the page. So I still, I'm, I'm failing to understand why we think the ICRIM money can be even used to support you, you know, salaries.
It's, it's right here on your second graph, FY twenty six. The line four eighty is income ICRIM. And line four hundred is property tax income. So the second line, property tax is the variable. We take three percent. ICRIM income is only sixty thousand, eight hundred and forty one. If you take two percent, ICRIM money goes up to one or doubles to one twelve. We take one percent, that become where property tax drops another fifty one thousand and ICRIM gives up fifty one thousand. So those are the two lines that are changing in this. And the way you're able to keep your salary and everything else the same is by taking if, if we give you one percent in set tax increase, you're taking money from ICRIM, which is supposed to go to physical, and we can decide.
That's what I'm saying. Like, it's only going, I guess that's where maybe we're not, well, it's only going to.
I know. Well, then, and, and that's because then further down on collections, instead of two hundred and forty thousand ourselves, more of that's being funded with the two hundred and forty thousand. So it's, it's still going to the two hundred and forty thousand, but paying less of the two hundred and forty thousand CLN budget or CLN funds and more. So it, it is, that's where the extra is being made up by taking more out of ICRIM. And salary is not changing. So it still comes down to my question is, we are, I, if, if we want to raise it one percent for the taxpayers this year, it's, it's only going to happen by decreasing to ICRIM to twenty seven balance or whatever it is now. It's going to decrease by hundred and sixty three. Or if we take three percent, it'll decrease only sixty thousand. So there'll be more left. And I, I'm just saying, the board needs to decide if to me, it's programs. We've got I, I don't think these three positions we added this year are reasonable, the HR, the collection manager, and then the business manager assistant. I think we needed those. But are we spending more on salary with programs than we need to be? And I don't know whether there could be, I don't know if they're full time, if some of them could be made half time and we just do less programs. But, but it's coming at the expense of taking money out of it. Money that, that are the funds that are set aside. And I don't know that we'll ever recover and have that money to buy extra collections, physical collections. And maybe it's okay at the board. We don't, don't need it, but I personally, this year with the bond going away, I'm not opposed to at least certainly going to two percent. I'm a little bothered to ever do three percent. So I, that's kind of where I'm at. But I, I kind of feel we've gotten, we've got ourselves right now in too big of a payroll to make this machine work without taking, taking money from ICRIM funds. And, and this other, I was just to make two other, one sheet that what we had here. It showed the negative fifty one percent for post falls. This has to be somebody who's getting mixed up with how the state funded. The state paid part of our property tax. We have to look at the total property tax that the assessor or the treasurer had and not say, what did the what the taxpayer paid versus what the state paid? Because that, that's a, that was a very confusing thing that year. I think there's something mixed up there. So that that isn't helping anything.
I find it helpful to know that the ICRIM money is earmarked specifically for collections. I didn't know that for sure. I didn't know if it's just a fungible. How many you can use for whatever you wish. It's also good to know that we're not going to hiring new people for the next six years. And so I guess he knows where, where are we now as far as, we're, we're much out of time when it's lying on on the agenda. What are our deadlines and where do we see, how many more meetings of this do we have to go on? I know we have a budget. We finish our budget at some point and we have a budget hearing open to the public. And then we submit, I think, at that point our materials to the county. What can we, do we have a timeline on some of this? So we know how long we can have to think about this.
Yeah, the budget hearing was set for August fourteenth, I think. So we have the July meeting, which on the calendar says third draft. So I don't, I, I, from now, right now, I think the only direction. So I don't, I I, from now, right now, I I think the only direction I was given to is to maybe look at. The full time privileges, like, this is the second draft. I'm not, right now, if you ask me for the third draft, I'd be handing you this again. Unless you need me to do something different, but I'm trying to make it clear that to me, I'm going to keep wanting to. Defend the decisions I'm making regarding the human resources, like the staffing, the levels. The efficiency, if, and I I'd be the first one to say, if I, if I was assessing. A a library and I notice that, hey, this person doesn't do anything, then that's not efficient. I I honestly believe that this, the way we have this set up is, is. Really well structured efficiently, you know, to run these things. And not, not, not with really that much extra wiggle wiggle. Like, people are working hard to get the job done. Uh, everyone's trying to keep everyone in their lane, do their jobs, stay efficient, focused. So. That is, I hope that's implied in here. It's not really like, there's not much trimming that can be done. Right? Unless you're gonna say, don't hire a collection development, don't get an HR, like, don't.
Don't extend the hours.
Yeah, I mean, they're extending hours. If you, this is, this is including twenty uh twenty two extra hours. Right? So if 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 I'm being directed to bring a third draft, which reduces salary line. I can tell you right now, it probably drops twenty two hours. That'd be the easiest way for me to keep the efficiency. But not have that number. So part of that number is also included in the the previous direction, which was between draft one and two, right? We dropped call it a two point five, three, and between drafts one and two, we added the hours that were asked for, right? So if you say, give me a different salary line between draft two and three. My mind would immediately go to the hours, right? Um, we could drop call it out of two point four something, which was like an hour, but I mean, there's things we could do, but it. I was, yeah, I would prefer you didn't give me that direction, right? I mean, to me, this, this is, this is the one part of the budget. If your direction is. Reduce fifty thousand in programming back down to thirty. I could do it. What's it gonna mean? It's gonna, it's gonna change the nature of the grant side, where I would turn to my program department, okay? We're gonna set it at thirty, your projected year end is probably gonna be fifty five or something, which means twenty five is coming from grants. You see what I'm saying? Like, to me, there is, there is wiggle room in a lot of areas. But there isn't really wiggle room in the staffing. Because, like, I can't, I can't go back and then we give a third draft that has much difference in, you know, basically lines five hundred through five twenty three. Or five twenty five, like, percy retirement, medical, like, those lines, I don't have much control over. I have a lot of control over everything in the six hundreds mostly. Don't have much in the set late sevens with the utilities, right? So there is room to move, but I would just need direction to say, listen. You have to drop X, Y, Z line by a certain amount.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't really have. Direction or suggestion. Now maybe I just need time to digest it. Like, I was looking at this, but I don't understand ICrim thinking, now I do. So we still have two more meetings, regular meetings, and we could.
No, the August one of the week after.
Okay, so we have one more.
One more.
We could schedule a special one if we needed.
And and I was gonna say, I can support programs, but I think next year I'm gonna wanna see. Some kind of a detail, let's see where the money, not not happy before on the directory report of showing us pictures of. Somebody coming here with with fish tanks or something, but showing me where the money went. I'm sure there's some stuff that's available by volunteers in the community. And it's, it'd be important to me next year, it is now. That whatever programs are going on and taking place, that they relate to the library and people. Being drawn into the library and a certain area or genre, whatever is, so that if we're not simply. Another entertainment source out there for the community. I just, I I I gotta get a feeling that it fits. And so. I'm gonna take it and face it. I I can be supportive of it and and trust that it's being used wisely. Good thing. We gotta wrap it up pretty fit. So I don't know if I have any changes to it. I I need to do the same thing. Is sit now, digest a little bit more, they understand it. I'm sure with a new trustee, the same thing, study this thing, and maybe we can. Come to some kind of a final decision, maybe by next, by the next meeting.
I I would ask. A little bit of a. Microscopic view of the programs. FTEs or salary, do we have more people doing programs now than we had? A year ago. I know it was all split up because it was stuck in, you know, the local library staff. But is there any flexibility? That that would be a request of, I guess, for the next meeting. Any flexibility? I don't, I don't understand if. Adult program, each library has an adult program and a youth program. Are those two part-time jobs or are they two? Full time? Can they be turned? Into one job? Can they be cut back? I don't know that we, we have the luxury to do as much with programming at every library and maybe one library. Spirit Lake takes care of Ethel and. Spirit Lake or something like that. I'm, I'm just hoping that maybe we could cut back FTE. One or two people by. Or doing something with programs. I know you, you wanna have it the way you've got it structured, but. That would maybe enable us to have a lower salary line and not have to take. Okay, so that, I I did, that would be mine.
Okay, is there anything we need the director and staff to do between now and next meeting regarding the budget? The third draft will include the request made. Any further discussion? With that one here, we move on to, um, agenda number sixteen, item number sixteen, trustee training. Uh, it's coming at me from our counsel.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have for you this week is a primer on. Update on the Little versus Lano County case. I made some predictions several months ago regarding a circuit split that I believed. The on-bank panel of the Fifth Circuit was going to make. After listening to two oral arguments and. Hearing the judges fairly strongly criticize the arguments made by the plaintiffs asserting. A right to receive information uh under the free speech clause of the First Amendment to be able to challenge uh. Removal from a public library. So this is one of the cases directly in point, we've been very closely watching to see how it was gonna turn out. We don't have one yet, just like this in the Ninth Circuit. So keep that in the back of your head, that that obviously is a risk for litigation since we don't have that yet. But we have the Eighth Circuit and the Fifth Circuit now with the clear split. And a couple of other circuits come down on the side of the Eighth Circuit where they do believe the the right to receive information. Allows a plaintiff to have a valid challenge to a public library where the Fifth Circuit and the DC Circuit don't. Uh, so I expect in the next year or two, a case to. Either we take, either this one be taken up to the Supreme Court with the Eighth Circuit or a new case. And so I. It's a little tricky, and this has come up over and over and over again, where people are taking. A partial opinion from a court out of context and using it as if it was the. The holding of the court, right? And so I thought this case was particularly helpful for us to understand. What it really stands for and helps you understand what PICO stood for and ALA, because those are all split decisions, right? And so you look at what's the narrowest basis that you can affirm. Or you can find that that case was affirmed on. And so speak, PICO split all over the place. So there's a really great couple of paragraphs in here that show you how the Fifth Circuit looks at what PICO actually stands for. And so I wanted to start out and just tell you that Little versus Lano County here. The holding is essentially that. It's an answer to the question whether someone may challenge a public library's removal of books as violating the free speech clause. And the Fifth Circuit says purchasing of books, curating is just like a removal decision, and so they're gonna apply the same law. The holding in this case was that a plaintiff may not challenge a public library's removal of a book. Based solely on a right to receive information under the free speech clause. There were seventeen judges that participated in the decision. One of the judges recused himself. Seven of the judges agreed with the whole majority opinion. Parts one, two, three, and four. Part forced the government's speech part. Ten only agreed with parts one through three. Part three is the section of the case that discusses the right to receive information. So when you look at what the Fifth Circuit case stands for, it doesn't mean that. A book that is placed on the shelf by the director is done so as government speech, although seven. Of the ten, of the seventeen believe that to also be the case. But the the narrowest holding here in the majority is what all of the judges agree to. Which is the free speech problem. That you can't challenge a removal based upon the right to receive information. So. That's what most of this first part is meant to kind of sort out for you, and you get these in the footnotes. If you look on page one. You get, uh, you know, before Elrod Chief Judge, and it lists all these last names. It's all the justices that heard the case. And then you get to page two. And it says how ten judges joined parts one through three and the judgment. Seven of those judges joined the opinion in full. So you have few judges that didn't join that whole opinion in full. So part three is the most critical part. The court looks to. One case, the Martin case. And then they also analyzed PICO. So part three starts on page thirteen. And there's two pages per sheet, because this was nine something pages, so I printed it like this to make it less intimidating for you. So on page thirteen. Under the court's analysis on the right to receive information. The court looked at a Jehovah's Witness case where there was a city prohibition door-to-door distribution of handbills, circular and advertisements. And then the court goes through all of the other Supreme Court cases that applied Martin down through the years. That a court couldn't bar a union organizer from delivering speech to county employees, is on page fourteen, first full paragraph. The government couldn't burn someone's right to receive political literature through the mail. A state violated a man's right to receive information by prosecuting him for privately possessing obscene material. Scholars had the right to receive the information and ideas of a foreign scholar they invited to the United States. The sellers had the right to propose transactions and buyers had the right to receive them. The court notes, though, however. That none of the cases cited did a plaintiff invoke a right to receive information from the government. So that was a strong factor in the court's denial of the right to receive information in the free speech clause. It also looks at PICO next, and this is definitely worth the read, starting on page fifteen. How the court interprets what PICO requires them to do. And the court looked at the narrowest holding that you could support. That would actually be binding on them as an appellate court. And they concluded that the right to receive information and ideas does not carry with it the concomitant right. To have those ideas affirmatively provided at a particular place by the government. So a lot of the other things in in the PICO case would be considered dicta or non-binding because it only had. One judge or three judges, right? But the Fifth Circuit said, this is binding on us that. You don't have a right to receive those ideas to be affirmatively, affirmatively provided to you by the government at a particular place. And so that is a prohibition on this First Amendment right or a limitation on it. Um, so that was kind of prong A on their analysis related to the free speech clause. And then on prong B. Um, they analyze. How they're supporting their conclusion that plaintiffs can't invoke the right to receive information to challenge book removals. So on page eighteen, they say first, plaintiffs would stretch that right. As they previously analyzed, starting with the Jehovah's Witness case, far beyond these rules. Second, the second reason on page nineteen is that if people can challenge which books libraries remove. Then they can challenge which books libraries buy. Um, and then the third supporting argument the court makes is that. How would judges decide whether removing a book is forbidden? And that's, uh, that analysis on page twenty. And verboten means forbidden and forbidden especially by an authority. The district court asks whether the library was substantially motivated to deny libraries, library users' access. To ideas by engaging in viewpoint or content discrimination. The panel clarified that libraries could remove books that are inaccurate. Pervasively vulgar, educationally unsuitable. But on box, the plaintiff argues the standard was no viewpoint discrimination. Applying such tests to libraries with removals would tie courts in endless knots. And so those three arguments primarily are supporting the Fifth Circuit's conclusion. Uh, another interesting note on page twenty four is footnote, uh, page twenty three, footnote twenty four, the court notes that. The ALA joined, um. On the my type brief, and they stated that it contradicted its own reading advice. So there's this kind of amorphous allegation that, you know, reading isn't engaging in viewpoint-based discrimination. And the court didn't buy that argument at all. The court. Seemed to imply that the historical and traditional role of the library wants to do just that. They didn't find a difference between. Making a determination on what was suitable and what they were calling, you know, solely because of the viewpoint-based discrimination. So the court wasn't gonna get involved in those knots. Um, on twenty four, the court also notes that it overrules Campbell. Campbell was one of the cases that. Fed into the original panel's decision to use the test where it talked about. You know, what was, what was the the directors or the boards sort of. Mind, you know, what what was the process they went through? What was their motivation to do it? The court rejected that. The court, the court didn't see the logic in it and and stated, what's the difference between wanting to deny access to those ideas? And thinking they are vulgar or educationally unsuitable. The court here in box said none, yet Campbell's holding was grounded on that faux distinctions. And the court rejected the idea that it was straightforward and it rejected the idea because it wasn't. Straightforward when the test was forbidding viewpoint animus. And so they state a couple of reasons why. Why that's the case, starting on twenty six. And it's interesting because the court here in the Fifth Circuit said there's really nothing straightforward about that. The panel majority could not agree on how Campbell applied to over half of the challenged books. If federal judges cannot tell whether removing a book violates the First Amendment, how are libraries supposed to? Are they denying access to ideas? Are they removing books that are vulgar or educationally unsuitable? Should they keep a constitutional lawyer on step? But suppose that Campbell only forbids viewpoint animus as plaintiffs claim, that works no better. Racism is a viewpoint. So is sexism. So are quackeries like phrenology, spontaneous generation, tobacco smoke, enemas. Tobacco smoke enemas all across denial and the theory that the Apollo eleven moon landing was fake. If a librarian finds. Such threat on the shelves, does the First Amendment bar him from removing it? Of course not, is what the court said. Um, twenty-eight, page twenty-eight there. Part four, government speech. It's a very good analysis. It's, it's forceful. It's very barely coaching in this logic. However, only seven of the ten approved it. Something very similar could happen in the Supreme Court. They could simply, uh. Deny a plaintiff's right to proceed under the First Amendment Free Speech Clause by claiming the right to receive information. Or the Supreme Court could hold that collection decisions are government speech. The logic fits together fairly nicely, but it's also not required because they're gonna find the narrowest holding. And so what this, um. What this leads me to conclude is that there will be additional. Attempts to litigate these issues now that we know that the right to receive information has a circuit split. I can guarantee you that. Nonprofit advocacy organizations are forum shopping across the United States to look for. A, a local federal judge in a. You know, a circuit that. They think they'll get a good panel on, so that way they can jump into the Supreme Court case. And, and so I would expect to see more challenges in circuits that don't have. Gates on all fours like Idaho and the Ninth Circuit on this specific issue, the right to receive information and government speech. And I think that notice will take it up fairly soon in the next couple of years. And so the takeaway here from this trustee training is, you know, in the Eighth Circuit. It's unconstitutional in the Fifth Circuit. It's not. And so this board is gonna have to do its best to understand what the Eighth Circuit is telling. Their circuit, public libraries to do, what the Fifth Circuit is, and apply those to what they think works best under item law. Knowing that there's always a risk. And so getting close to the line isn't, isn't the best strategy, trying to take a, a conservative middle-of-the-ground approach about how we. Structure these policies is good, so that way we'll have a much higher likelihood of surviving the challenge. And my advice still stands generally where. The PICO judges, the ALA judges, the, the Campbell judges. The Little versus Lano County judges, they all seem to intimate that there is still. An ability for First Amendment challenge. When there is an egregious First Amendment violation, where the government does overtly take. One of those viewpoints and. Solely for that reason exercises its governmental authority to make a decision. And so. You know, as long as the director has a good set of, uh, curation guidelines and a direction set by the board and they exercise those and. They're faithful to those, I think we'll, we'll be okay. But this does support the discretion. That the library director has in making purchasing and removal decisions, right? This case seems to indicate that the courts are moving in the direction of letting the local libraries curate their collections. If there's no questions, that's.
Just be close, go ahead and don't take it too long, because we're fifteen minutes behind.
So. I just wanted to clarify, we're Ninth Circuit. And there is no case like this in the Ninth Circuit going on. So all we can do is either hope something comes in the Ninth Circuit, but realistically, it's gonna go to SCOTUS and then it'll apply it all. There's a, probably does at that point, whatever SCOTUS said, but. You were thinking that. Different district will play it up and go to quick SCOTUS before this one, but it sounded like this one. Other side is going to SCOTUS.
Yeah, and I also think that the Ninth Circuit's current precedent isn't on all fours. We have. Similar cases, but not the precise case. And they're probably closer to the Eighth Circuit than the Fifth Circuit. So there, the Ninth Circuit, at least historically. Was more what I would have predicted, at least. Or, you know, the, the Trump administration, the, his first term, he appointed. A, a whole host of Ninth Circuit judges. I mean, the, and the circuit pretty much just changed drastically. With all of his appointees. And so we haven't. A lot of things are on the table, right? And so. There's a lot of shifting precedent going on in the Ninth Circuit because it, it, it drastically changed. And so while we believed prior to this that. The Ninth Circuit would conclude that the right to receive information was a valid claim. Now I'm not so sure that the Ninth Circuit would conclude that. It would depend on what panel you got and then if you. Were granted an on-ball challenge, then we could be right where the Fifth Circuit is too. And that doesn't mean we should push the envelope, you know?
But, but if anything, our new policy on material selection. Kind of aligns with the, the, the library. Staff is to pick books that the community wants. Right, yeah.
Right, I think council, I think you're keeping up that present. Move on to agenda number seventeen. They entertain a motion. You're going to executive session, but it's going to Idaho code seventy-four dash two zero six one F. You've been an executive second. Okay, this is, uh, move. If we move to, we're going to, they're going to executive session, but two in Idaho code seventy-four dash two zero six. One F, it can be an executive session, so we'll co-vote. Let's be boss. That's the honest thing.
I.
Let's be common.
I.
Um, that's what we have to do. Yeah, that's what we'll, chair, yes. Okay.